It's not in the right step, right? I understand that.
Well, well, the point...
That's up to Casey to give it.
Correct. And, and, and that's the agreement I have with the county is I get it done.
Well, I'll, I'll be honest with you. The agreement you have with the county at this point in time now is under us. I mean, we're the ones that make those decisions at this point in time, right? So, I, yeah. I mean, we weren't involved in it.
Here's the question is, what, what is this whole thing is going to satisfy everybody? What decision tonight do you all want to hear us do that's going to satisfy it and get this gentleman's house built? That's what I want.
Well, I've tried to tell you three times.
No, you didn't.
Yeah, yeah, you won't let me talk. Let me finish. There's a deed recorded in there that stipulates by the county, signed by me, by JCR. It's recorded in it and the attorney has seen it. It's recorded requiring street curb gutter lights. And we also have an agreement between White Pine County and JCR that's open above that. If that's not done within the three years, but in the recorder's office, a recorded deed for this property and this, this subdivision is recorded. It also states in that deed that it will meet all federal, city, and state requirements. So, that's been done. So, you, there you go. You've got everything right there, right?
Richard, if you haven't answered my question, what do you want us, if you, to make you happy and to make you guys happy and to you happy, what decision do you want us to make tonight to leave you?
I would like you... I, I would like you to...
We want the attorney to change his view.
Wait one second. You want, what you want, I'll get out of your head. You want me to...
I'd, I'd like to hear from our attorney.
Mr. Howe, just one moment. Actually, you can go, he tails Rock, and you can go ahead now.
Turn up the volume.
I'm here with Mike DeGioio, and I'd like you guys to thank the builders at the home. Cause he wants Park Avenue in Ely. I, I would begin by saying we appreciate you guys, all of your time allowing us to join this meeting, uh, join this meeting with you. I'm sure nobody would sleep when they heard that a lawyer was getting involved in this situation. So, I wanted to explain that to you guys. First of all, Mike didn't get on Google and, and find a random lawyer to come up, stand up for everybody. I've known him my whole life. He thought it was somebody that could maybe help here by brokering all you guys together, adding a little clarity, giving everyone the chance to talk about what they're expecting here. Um, Mike received a conditional permit to begin building. When he got that conditional permit, he foresaw a couple of issues that I think would cause anyone concern because those conditions on his permit are not within his control. So, he reached out for help, for me, just to bring the stakeholders together and try and clear up the ambiguity in a, in a diplomatic way because, um, I do a little more public speaking. But I do think that it's a good opportunity to get everyone on the same page. That way, the rest of the bills that you guys have anticipated for this area can go forward smoothly without anyone, um, feeling left out there. I read a minute from your guys' previous planning commission meetings. And after reviewing those discussions, it's obvious that everyone in there is working with good intentions. I think the city has been gracious in providing the conditional permit, trying to get Mike's project to move along. And definitely the minutes indicate that everyone there, you're all have the same intention, which is to, uh, foster some economic development and investment in your community, which is Mike's hometown there. But we have a relatively simple question for the city. Mike is using the services of Dave Weaver to have this custom home built. The timeline for that home is expected to take four to five months. The city obviously also has certain expectations and timelines for the developer. Those, um, obligations and the timelines for those developments, uh, uh, those phases of development, paving, streetlights, what have you, uh, there are some differences of, of opinion on that. And I've called you guys individually and I can say there are some differences of opinion, but I'm sure we can sort that aside now. The deed indicates that JCR has applied open three years to complete a lot of these or all of these, um, improvements. But I'm sure the city has a different opinion there. So, our question is, obviously, Mr. DeGioio does not own JCR Development and cannot control their building timeline. So, our question is, will Mike DeGioio be given a CBO at the completion of his home build, regardless of what phase JCR is in for their development?
That's, that's exactly what we're looking for.
That's what we want to be here. That's exactly what we want to be here, right?
Thank you.
I, I, you guys, I, this is, uh, I firmly believe this is a complete miscommunication issue. I have no idea why or how this developed, but, um, he's exactly right. He, he spelled it out. This is the issue. We've got a house that we're trying to build. We've got a, a piece of property that we're subdividing, not subdividing, subdividing, whatever you want to say. These are two pieces, two separate pieces. And so, the, I, I think honestly, at this point in time, as long as everything is done, Lee, with that, with the house portion of it, we still have to hold JCR accountable for the other stuff with the subdividing part, but that can still play out as we move forward.
As long as it's done within the three years.
And that's all we're asking.
Yeah, yeah.
And like Dave said earlier, when he came up, it's basically curb gutter, sidewalk, water, a gup sewer. So, the guy can come in and live. Okay, basically. And if there's a hydrant near there or there's lights, you know, I'm just saying, I haven't received anything that shows me otherwise is there. Those are questions that just need to be asked and, and need to be answered. So, that was just where we were at.
Okay.
When I say we had a meeting with Brad.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, so... To s- to satisfy the built, the process of building the house, where are we at? What do we need, Lee? Are we, are we good in this department?
They're good to go.
They're good to go?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the next concern, there's no, there's no, um... To finish his project, the house project, there's nothing that is, that's exempt from that, right? When we hold JCR accountable for that portion, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, really, the house, the, the approval of the building permit...
The building permit has already been issued.
Shouldn't be...
Completion of it.
The completion of the building permit, uh, shouldn't be held back based off of JCR not giving the...
Based on, yeah, whether it's, you know, safe to live and you've got water, a sewer, you'll have the curb and gutter sidewalks, you know?
Okay, so, okay? Okay, all right.
That's what I've been saying since day one.
Yeah, okay. Is that, are, are we good with that?
So, so, so the only, the only thing with that is they will have water, sewer, power, of course. But curb and gutter is going to depend on what BJ says on basin engineering's point of, you guys want me to pave the half of the road and dig all the other lines in later and it can look like every other road here? Or do you want me to pave it when we get so many houses done instead of one?
I see what you're asking. Well, you've got three years, right?
Correct.
So...
Correct. And that's all I'm saying. On the curb gutter and asphalt, we had three years. The hydrants are going in because that is a safety deal. It's already, right? That, that's already, that's already in with the Bureau of Safe Drinking Water and, and, and all that.
And the road is there, it's paved to fire access.
Right, it's going to be, it's going to be based for now, as BJ said, until we dig the si... Cause we want to put all the laterals in, the home is going, before we dig them back up.
Right.
So, that's, that was the only thing. We're, are we going to go do this and then have to dig them back up? And it's going to be another bad city street.
And, and, and we want to make it clear, as long as the, as long as the homeowners who are buying these homes, that are building these homes, realize that you don't have to technically complete that process until that three-year period.
And we've, we probably, we probably will do the curb gutter and sidewalk just to get an, just to get an accessibility there, but we're not going to pave the road. And we're going to base it until we can pave the whole road.
But just, just as long as they're on there.
Right.
Yeah, you don't want a half-paved road. That is not what I'm saying. I'm saying it can be done at the end. But, um, as a home builder, you need the, you need the curb. That gives you your height.
I can't complete the project without...
You can't complete a project without curb gutter, sidewalk. That all has to be done because everything's done off of that. Cause your house has to sit so high off of that curb.
The driveway can't be put in without the curb.
And that's, and that's another one thing. I wasn't given elevations.
Yep.
Certain, I give it to that, okay?
I appreciate that.
So, that's where we're at.
And I don't know where that may lead with that because they do have the elevations. It's all been shot. Dave has the elevations.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
I have a foundation height there. I have everything.
Let's hear Dave.
So, as, as these gentlemen, like Andy were saying, there is, it sounds to me like some miscommunication going on of everything happening. So, to be clear, to help let you know where we're at, um, as the chairman has, has mentioned, yes, all of that is being said and finally divided lots. None of that is a question here. In regards to the construction, I think there is just some slight miscommunication with all the parties involved, I think, which everybody's figuring out right now, is this is a three-year step process to develop this little area, which, yes, all of the infrastructure legally by law and state health is and will be put in. So, no matter if we build one house or all of them at once, it will be in ahead of time. Okay? In regards to building the house, we do have the grading plans done. We know where the curb and gutter goes. The, the three-year plan of building it out, if you would, is, I believe, the miscommunication with everybody. We do know where the curb and gutter goes for this individual lot. That will be staked out. They will build that lot. It will meet the overall design of the project. And so, instead of as a normal subdivision or developed area process, yes, you normally throw all the infrastructure in, you put in the curb gutter sidewalk and you pave the road. Then they move along and they build the lots as the developer sells the lots and builds lots. That is the mental that we all have in our head right now. This one is just toppling out a little different, but it has a three-year process to do so. But in the end, all of those factors will end up being...
There's not one of us here that aren't excited about this project and this team member to get houses in this place. I mean, it is, it's great.
I, I just think with all the entities going on and we understand...
The first, the first one always hurts. It always, it, you know, and this, this is a brand new thing.
Probably both are.
Right. But, but the point, the point I think we've all gotten here is that the communication was the big downfall, was the big breakdown. And, and so, Lee, I, I've known Lee a long time. Lee has been great to work with on stuff and I, I see him as a, you know, outstanding person to work with. Um, and I know all of you the same way. Um, it was just one of those things that the communication's just not there. But, but obviously, it needs to get done so we're not holding back things.
And again, yeah, we're, I'm glad Lee's there. We talk on the phone. He calls the office all the time. I'm kind of like everybody else. How come we're on your agenda when maybe the party should have just went out together and go, okay, let's double check what the game plan is and then we're good to go and let's go.
Until I got this to come here, that they weren't getting that on conditional bills because how it was with the county on what we signed. So, we didn't, I mean, because like I say, I mean, I, I, we didn't just go, oh, we're going to go make a road. We hired basin engineering to design everything.
Right, but on the same hand, you got, you gotta, you gotta respect the process and that's department. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying anything, but there's, I mean, there's plenty of opportunities of, of a lot of contractors in this world that try to skip by a bunch of stuff and, and he's just trying to do his due diligence. And so, please just, just communicate. That's all I'm going to say is just...
No, no, correct. He's trying to do his due diligence and that's what I signed with them, is my due diligence, that I'd have to have everything done.
I know, but he's not building it's my turn.
I, I understand that, but...
So, communicate to him. This is the man right here that's going to say...
Well, well, I understand that, but he wasn't there then.
I know, I know, exactly. And that's, that's why we're here. We're in this really weird situation.
Exactly, because we're in this, we're, we're getting, the curtains are just opening for us too at this point.
Yeah.
But what we're seeing is just a simple, all it is, simple communication breakdown. That's all it comes down to.
That's like I said, when I saw this on the agenda, first thing I said was, what?
All right, so, how can we move forward with this?
I, I would think the thing we do is just move forward and say, here, we've talked over everything that needs to be done. Make a motion to approve moving forward with this and turn it over to the building inspector.
I don't, I don't think we want to move to approve anything. I think we just...
But we haven't yet.
I'm wrong, but...
It's nothing new.
An amend. And here the, the discussion was about an amend. And I, I, we don't want to amend anything. There's nothing to amend here. We, I just think flat out, we don't do a thing with this.
I think the only thing we can amend is just better communication.
And this is basically the approval, it says here, the approval of parcel map, condition that all requirements imposed by Nevada statute, Ely, City ordinance regarding requirements and first subdivisions be followed. And that's exactly what you're...
When you approve that parcel map, that was already a part of it because that's the law. When you approve that map, that's what you said you could prove it.
Right, right.
I'm like Andy, I think the two items match, is you just squash the whole thing.
Yeah.
He's the chair.
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I like Andy, I...
You got that right.
There's nothing to vote on. Just squash the two items in.
Okay.
We all get together.
This is Carol. I just wanted to ask one more question. I, I can tell we've inspired some productive discussion. I think that's great. But we're, a lot of this, a lot of you guys are talking at the same time. And I just wanted to see here, a- as far as the question goes, if Mike's home is built at the end of the summer and JCR is still in the process of, of conforming and completing their conditions, that I give him that window, is Mike going to get a CBO?
Oh, so now it's our next agenda item to discuss that.
Sorry about that, okay?
I have a question. Lee, have you received enough clarification and assurance of first lieu here to go ahead with what you've already approved?
If they claim to have the maps and they give it to me, then yeah. I mean, I, I don't know. I'm just saying, I, me and Brad don't have enough to go on.
Okay, and Mr. Miller, you, you did say you have...
My understanding is, like I said, this is not my project. And the gentlemen who are in front on us, they are out until mid or end of next week. So, but just by conversation in the office and these guys are always in there and we're talking about it, I understand is the design of the whole road system is done. And so, if anything, then we'll, if not, we'll provide up and finish them up and do what we need. But in regards to the infrastructure, for him to have water and sewer, he's going to have to have water and sewer. He can't have a CBO. So, that infrastructure will go in.
Correct.
Yeah. And basically the road and doing whatever, he can do his thing.
Which, like I say, is already approved to the state. Bureau of Safe Drinking Water is already approved on that.
Yeah, that, and we're not worried about that. Lee's not worried about that at all. He was worried about the elevations.
Right.
And, and the bottom line, you've got to have the elevations. You both, or builder, you both knew that, that's...
Right, and apparently the elev, the elevations are there. Apparently that you, he just never got provided with the things from BJ.
Yeah.
I just think we buff up and we'll do our thing and the next movement is going to start.
Thank you guys. Keep working, keep building. Please. Awesome. Thank you guys.
We can weigh around this review. Since we're in a debate, to ask like for a motion for amendment on this? And when a motion is made, it's a lack of emotion?
Yeah, we see the yes. So, that's good.
Yes, that's the way we...
Unless I'll entertain a motion? Not heard. Uh, this dies for lack of emotion.
Oh, I see. I see what you guys are doing, all right.
The schedule for possible action, approval of building, permission to design a frame of condition for receiving a certificate of occupancy on the proposed home being built for Mike DeGioio at seventeen oh one Park Avenue, Ely, Nevada, eighteen N zero zero two dash two seven one dash twenty one.
Casey Jones, JCR Development. So, we will have water, sewer, power, curb, and gutter in by the time Mr. DeGioio is ready to move in and get his eye.
There's no say.
Lee? Lee Walker, building official. Yeah, as, as long as those things get done, we will issue him a CBO.
Thanks, guys. That was our question. We appreciate you guys working through that, um, and your time, putting us on the agenda. And that's up to your best, and I'm Mike's excited to get out there and get back to being in that community. So, we, we appreciate your guys' help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just so you guys know, there is a shortage of concrete powder. So, watch out. That's why Q and D quit pouring on Main Street because we can only get three truckloads a week right now. Nevada cement, yeah, Nevada cement's out of powder. They're, they're doing an allotment for even Q and D construction right now. So, we get allotted, they have seventy-five million, I think, or something like that, in projects between Alco, Reno, and Ely. And they're allotted three trucks to each place a week. And that is with all the other contractors, like, uh, Road and Highway and all the others.
Okay.
So, we're having to go other places for concrete too, but the state expect ones, yeah. So, don't expect Green Street to be pork quick.
You got, you got bags of concrete.
We got some, yeah, we're gonna exit. So...
Anybody else? We'll hook up, see what you have.
Okay.
Any other, any other input?
The sidewalk, guys, is that going to be something we could, um, make a term?
What was the question?
What was that question again?
I'm just asking for people's thoughts on the sidewalk, whether that was one of the, the one's house or anyone's perspective on it.
Um, now that you say that, yeah, it should, to a thing. Yeah, anybody to access the house needs to be able to walk there. So, I would, I would say, yeah, sidewalks need to be included as well.
In terms of the overall developments going on.
So, what do we do in the situation if there is an issue with cement, with, on a hole?
There, there won't be an issue of port of the curb gutter and sidewalk. We'll make sure that happens because we do have enough allotted for the houses too. So, I guess the thing would be to have Lee put the stipulation on his permit. I can sign it with Mr. DeGioio or whatever, that I'll get it done through the city or through the county, however you guys want to do it.
Everything through the city, but yeah.
So, Mike can do something with Lee tomorrow, next day?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get together real quick. Um, yeah, sidewalks would definitely be included here.
Any more public comment? Do you hear a motion on item D? Want to approve, Carol?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval passes.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Hey, next item E. Regarding building and zoning codes within the city, Ely, White Pine County.
I have nothing to talk about.
Absolutely nothing at this point.
No, I think I'm good.
Anybody else? Okay, well, we'll move on to the schedule of possible action. Approval of minutes from the regional planning commission meeting, Delta May nineteen twenty twenty one.
Carol, you're up.
I like the daddy lies.
On, why not page two of the... At the end, um, the second paragraph in the public hearing decision slash decision. Throw mine down, um, or I, to dig footers. I don't... What's a footer?
Footers the, where the, based where the symbols are like, well, footers where the, is, is the concrete part that goes into the ground that you build the house onto.
Okay.
That's actually, that is an actual thing.
And the actual name is footers because that's not what I grew up learning and what my husband trained me to do. So, I'm going, okay, footers. Thank you. That's what I grew up, what I love. I read that when I was pregnant, what's a footer? Anyway, that's page two. Uh, page three at the end of the first paragraph. Uh, page three. And, and first paragraph. It says, Leah Brown made a motion to approve the ten... Jason Bath made a motion to second the item. Do you... Uh, we don't do a... We usually don't do a motion to second. We usually do make a second to the motion. I'm just looking.
Was, was that, was that actually what was said or did I just type it?
I, I don't know. I, I don't really...
You're just asking for verbal clarification?
Yeah, I just, you know, it's...
I guess you can motion second. It's not traditional.
Yeah, you...
Two seconds. I can't help you. I'm sure, probably we messed it up. So, we'll just say it and probably set that.
Okay.
Anybody want to move to amended to, to a motion or move it?
Yeah. I, I know the move to amend it would be the, quite the first thing, but to move to make a second didn't quite work. And then on the page four, first paragraph, the next last word on the right. Uh, he are needs to be... At the top. So, do the bottom of it, bottom of that paragraph, right there. Says the voter was called for. Yeah, I know, terrible. And I can't, oh, I have one over there. And then, and the public comment, page six, first line. Rory Carson stated that she spoken with two individuals. And that's it.
It was turned pocket like by that person.
Hey, you're a...
Yeah. Thanks for all that.
For, for those of us that keep thinking you're...
Okay. Any other changes?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Thank you for your votes. And do I hear a second? Okay, Jason moved to approve and Leah's seconds. Followed in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote? Minutes pass. Hey. Onto the public comment.
Again, Burton Hilton, White Pine County assessor, uh, and I, I would just ask a request to, uh, find, I'd like to know where the statutes, I'm unaware, how item C came up on your agenda. At some point, I don't think, obviously, that's, but I would, I would like to get some information on how that even was able to appear in Ely.
Burton, I can't hear you, please. In the mic.
I'd, I'd like to know how item C was able to appear on the agenda, uh, as it is worded. I, there may be something in the statutes I'm unaware of, but I would like to educate myself so I can be better informed in the future. As I understand, in my opinion, this is setting a date, there's precedent to even have this on the agenda. So, that's just a request because, and like I said, I could be totally misguided in my, in my situation. I died for life for motion. But it should not have appeared, appearing in my... Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will look into that.
Thank you.
Okay. Over the comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, recently, uh, my brother filed a complaint with the city media in regards to animals within the city limits. Uh, I want to remind you, or you, you folks weren't around at that time, that on August sixteen, two thousand and six, I was cited for having goats, uh, on a piece of property a friend of mine brought in. I had hired him to cut ways and he said, let me feed my goats. I was cited with, uh, chapter three animal control, article A livestock infowal, sections five point three A, so on and so forth, keeping it regulated. I've given you pictures of the owner of the city council. I looked at the citations by the animal control officer. Not one, not one for this situation, yet they come out to me. And I happen to be a mayor at the time and it pisses me off, the selective enforcement. The property owner has a conflict with an individual sits on the city council. He stated that the property in question is not within the city limits, but unfortunately it is. He should have taken the time to do his homework. I did. I have done. You people need to address that. Stop the selective enforcement. Parcels to start with zero zero one is within the city. Parcels to start zero ten are in the county. Mr. Chairman, uh, in regards to the ingress, ingress, egress on, uh, February eleventh, two thousand, I believe it is, the city sued me after giving me permission to put in curb gutter and sidewalk. Again, we have standards for everybody or nobody. We, when we look at the, uh, approach at the Hampton, the Great Basin next to the, uh, Copper Queen, I want to address now that we're doing the new construction. I was, uh, noticed on a piece of property I have on seven ten Avenue G. I'm waiting for Leah to... I'm waiting for Lee to look at the property and give me a permit.